I'm saying it might even run out, just in the course of the conversation I meant.
Well, let's have a quick meeting.
[laughing] Encourage everybody to.
Um. Um, I don't have an audio recording app. Well, it's just for you. Any questions for the manager on his recommendation? Okay. Um, earlier today, uh, the chair of the school board reached out to me, um, asking to come forward tonight to clarify, um, some things, um, at our meeting on the eighth, we had, um, uh, the director of facilities come forward and answer some questions, and I think that there was, um, some confusion from some of his answers, uh, and, and the chair of the school board was looking to clarify some of those statements that were made, so, um, I'm going to invite, um, Elizabeth Seifert, the school board chair, to come forward. She also provided a reference that I'll hand out to you all.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here, Elizabeth.
Thank you, and I'd like to thank the town council for allowing me to just clarify a little bit. The, the board representatives of the town council has shown an interest in the capital improvement plan, and with good reason, who are the stewards of all the buildings in this town. So, um, I wanted to make sure that we were clear about what we were talking about. I think not only the, um, the, the difficulty in every facility last time, the generator is also adding to our review of everything that was going wrong. So, um, the document you have in front of you, the school board received, um, made till late March, which I think the date is March 1st, and so this is just helping you understand, um, some of the decisions that were made, and they're not, um, if you look at the top portion, those are, um, at that time, those were the capital improvement projects that were going forward. That was, has, is recently been finalized, and I'll talk about that a little bit, but let's, I would like to direct your attention specifically to the bottom chart that talks about requests from CIP that were removed from consideration. Uh, there was quite a bit of discussion about that. This list down bottom was number one driven by the subsidy cut, but also driven by a need to have a really careful look at how we are using our taxpayers' money, and having a broader look and a bigger sense of everything that needs to happen and when it should happen. So, and in particular, there was a proposal for, um, a weight room, locker room, trainer's room, storage upgrades, and, and a new classroom to be built at the high school. That was a pretty large item, almost, almost $500,000 on its own, and that was not supported. Um, that was the lion's share of what came out. It, it is not, if you notice roofs and those sorts of things, that, that's all said. And, um, so I just kind of wanted to give people an understanding of what, what came out, what the lion's share of that $437,000, close to, you know, it was about, what were actually, $563,000 was the total. But I also want to talk about process. The Buildings and Grounds Committee was reformed. It involves all building principals, the athletic director, a school board rep, in particular, Heather Hopper, the superintendent, the facilities director, Greg, and Kathy Stanford, our director of teaching and learning. That group was, has been meeting biweekly, sometimes weekly, looking at capital improvement projects, operational projects, and really getting together and saying, what needs to happen? What are the priorities? What's going on? And so it's been a very collaborative effort, looking at the needs of this district, going back to the CIP plan, but also there are some things that didn't make it onto the CIP plan, and there are other things that maybe are definite priorities. If you look, if you look at the top, Conover Middle School, there's a standby generator to cover the entire facility. That was on the capital improvement plan. I know, I don't know everything is on this new list. There is a new list in March 1st, but I know that that did get moved because it's a rather large item, and there are other priorities that, that took its place. So, it's, it's been a very collaborative effort, um, and, um, there has been no board-level discussion about defraying CIP items or removing them, with the intent of specifically coming for a bond, um, that could at some point down the road be a discussion, but it's never been a specific discussion at this point, and none of the, the roofing or those sort of really important projects have that defer. But I just wanted to make sure that we were clear about that, and, um, to make the town council look light, my understanding is that the Buildings and Grounds Committee has completed the list of what will be done, given that budget, that has been, you know, that portion of the budget, and I would be happy to share that with the town council, so we know exactly what was going into the CIP for the next year. So, that's all I've got for you. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Elizabeth?
Oh.
Counselor Wright?
Yes, um, you mentioned that the CIP bond is not, has not been discussed by the school board, but yet it is in the school board budget that we, budget book that we received, um, on the facilities. It says bonded, bonded, or bond, or to be bonded, or something, and so forth, so.
I'm talking about, I've, I've heard the director, Elizabeth, made reference to some different bonds that I wasn't aware of, so I guess that's what I'm comparing. We have our, come to the town council, and we have a current bond, that's my understanding. We don't have, we don't have plans in the works at this time to go out to bond, unless, unless I have a statement.
So I'm still confused. On the, on your facilities tab in your budget booklet, um, page three of, two or three, three or three.
May I read my, I brought my notebook.
Yes, yes, please do. I don't want to be trying to.
Okay.
And, um. There's multiple things in the same, in the case, yes, case, yes, it says bond, bond, and so.
Yeah, and I think that's, I think that's, you know, the, the facilities director may have identified as possible bonding projects, but they haven't addressed at the board level as bonding projects.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Board Chair Seifert?
Thank you.
Thanks. I know that that was, um, somewhat out of order on the agenda, since the school board item is the second, but I wanted to just bring that forward, so that in the context of all of the discussion we'll have, um, sort of have the most comprehensive information we could. Other discussion?
Just, just one clarification, under that number 600 account, we opened 203.9, now we're just at an optimal $235,249.
Could you speak up and just add one more time?
Yes, yeah, the operation by changing by $8,000, which changed the, the 600 level on that municipal spread from 283.379 to 235.379.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks for asking.
Any other discussion on 75-2017, municipal portion of the budget? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the municipal budget for fiscal 2018 as amended, including the $48,000 reduction to account 600? Close? Yes, unanimous? Next up is number 76-2017, the school board budget approval. Counselor Sullivan, do you want to make the motion?
Counselor.
Yep.
Can I, this, the point of consideration is, number one, cost on summary is the entire amount, $24,879,14.
I have $24,879,14.
Okay, that is all.
Well, I knew that we appropriate. $24,660,350, $660,350 would be a 1% increase from $24,879,14.
Second?
Second.
Counselor Wright, discussion? Counselor Brennan?
Sure. So I, you know, we used to have a lot of time, Jessica, working on preparing a lot of really great information, um, the spreadsheets, the formulas, um, and routinely face what we're looking at, the numbers, the personnel, really truly a reality and based in facts. You know, I thought we had consecutively put that out, there's a possibility that it's not in our workshop, we agree that as a councilman, certainly people can make a motion anytime, that we would be going forth with the original number from the school board. So knowing the realities that are put in front of us, knowing the facts, I still feel that I will, would like to support, so I'm voting against that, the original, um, school board approved budget, $24,879,14. I feel that, um, we as a community both improve school board members to look at the school budget, and to spend the countless hours and months to sift through that information, and to work at looking at all the mandates, this funding that has to be done, and what we want, and all fresh ones, and then to look at what the district leaders can work with them to come up with something that's viable. I feel that people give, was a move to give Elizabeth, particularly for our schools. We might stay here because we have, we grow really without it, um, but they move here and our school, and our successful, incredibly solid, excellent schools that attract people to this community originally, and at the same time, lose all our corporate values. So I feel that the school did an excellent job about finding what the needs are, and weighing that with the cost, we came forth with what they feel is a reasonable, um, increase. That's really not, you know, truly out of mind from past years. I think if you put together a scenario of seventeen-year history with, you know, trajectory from, you know, lower, you know, left-hand, upper-right, and we have done an increase, we, we have annually, every year increase, and, and that's a trend where I am, how do you do this? I'm not sure everybody else. So I still feel like this community, and I hear, we heard from a lot of people today, and I realize there's a lot of people who feel like they would like to see this, um, our budget lowered by, um, you know, when I feel it's kind of arbitrary or man, just to say that we do lower it. I would prefer to defer to our school board and those elected people have, um, really before, so I would like to vote against that motion, and hoping that we can come back around to the original proposed amount.
Counselor Brennan?
I agree with just about everything that Counselor Brennan has said. I felt that we just said a workshop, and thought that we agreed, and then on moving there, and we're going to go forward with the proposed budget from the school board. Um, I've heard lots of people that the budget keeps going up, and the budget keeps going up, and so I asked, um, our town manager, Matt, to give me the numbers for our surrounding communities, if people are saying that they can't stay here, because they may not be able to move out of Cape. So if you move this up fourth, then their school budget is being at a 4.59% increase this year. You go to fourth, and they're at a 2.75% increase. Scarborough is at a 4.96% increase, just for their school budget. Then I also look at some of the communities that we compare ourselves with on other things, like Yarmouth, they're at a 5.5% school budget increase. Fountain, a five, a seven percent increase. So it's not just us, and I think the school board did a great job to keep the budget up, and they did, and they did everything they wanted, so, you know, they obviously have many sacrifices, and they worked, we did this, and a conscious effort to keep their budget down, so I feel we'll be voting against this, I support the budget as a proposal.
Okay, other discussion?
I'll go next.
Counselor Wright?
And I will take a little bit longer than others. Wrote myself some notes, and I also, um, thought that I had some numbers in there, or sometimes, you know, we talk about numbers, and they just get a little bit too much, but, what I will say is, this is my fourteenth year reviewing the school budget. I would suggest that maybe I've got more than anybody else in the room. Um, I review the budget line by line, and with my financial background, I feel I have a good grasp on how the budget is developed, and I listen to what the needs are. I'll talk about some, um, some numbers. Class size. In December of 2015, the school board changed the class size policy to reflect lower class sizes across all classes, thereby allowing the same staffing numbers for lower total student population. Reduction in school population. In 2001, the student population of Cape Elizabeth was seven, 1,736 schools, with a budget of There was a peaking enrollment in 2006 of 1,847 students, with a budget of $17,554,244. The proposed school board enrollment for 2018 is 1,571 students, with a budget of $24,879,14. Since 2001, there has been a reduction of 165 students. At the same time, staffing has increased by 1.5 on staff. Not sure if 5.1 is, but I'd say half. In 2001, the price expended per student was $7,844. The proposed price expended per student for 2018 is $15,836, which is more than the double. The special leg population, which was talked about significantly, um, at our workshop, is approximately 10% of the total student population, which is lower than surrounding communities, according to the school department. At the town council's school board workshop, the town was asked to reduce the proposed, their proposed budget by 1%, which the town has done, was proposed, and the school board do the same, which was not supported. The original superintendent's proposed budget at the first school board workshop, their workshop, was $24,682,945, an increase over the current year of $395,400. The school board's proposed budget is $24,879,14, an increase of $591,469. Initially, the school board budget was $25,1,623, an increase of $714,78, which was mitigated by a $122,609 decrease in health insurance costs. Since 2003, the percentage, the percent of salaries and benefits compared to the total school budget has gone from 77.57% to 83.11%. This upward creep has left less money for other school needs. Although most of the school staff has negotiated contracts, the total number of employees is up to this superintendent. So referring back to the salaries and benefits, which was a great concern to me, um, you look at 2003, you look at 2008, you look at 2017, and you look at 2018, and the amount of the school budget is creeping up, and salaries and benefits, just leaves very little, very little for other things. Um, this year, we talked, we heard tonight about the CIP cut, which again concerns me, because we're talking about the maintenance of our school facilities, and it was discussed that we would continue to maintain these school facilities, and we would have a CIP budget that covered that. And again, we heard tonight that there was a bonding issue that was not discussed by the school board, but is in our school board packets. So, I couldn't say more, but I'm not going to. I support the Cape Elizabeth schools. If I didn't, I wouldn't have given my time and energy over the last fourteen years. I received huge amount of pay, I get the same increase that everybody else gets, zero percent of zero is zero. I graduate from Cape Elizabeth, as well as my husband and his family, our daughter graduate from here. Cape Elizabeth has consistently been one of the top performing schools in the state. I continue, continue to believe that the high performance is due to partnership between the schools, the parents, and the students. At the same time, my responsibility is to the whole town, and I know there are residents that cannot afford higher taxes regardless of the amount. This is not a bare home's budget, um, as outlined in the details. And just aside note, when the state uses the EPS funding formula, which we talked about before, one of the items of consideration, and I don't agree with all of what the state decides that the schools need, but one of the items of consideration is enrollment, and the reason the state produces our funding is because of our reduction in enrollment. And I would remind counselors that there have been, counselors in the past, as of last year, said that this is not, um, sustainable, so I ask, if not tonight, then when? Thank you.
You? Other discussion? Counsel Sullivan?
Yes, I, I've got some further comments. Um, I certainly want to commend the school board for everything that you put a lot of time into this, um, so we, um, and I think it's very important to call this a helpful friction, because this is all about checks and balances. Um, we are mandated by law to be the final verdict on how the votes are voted, and so I wanted to just mention that. This school board budget has no cut requirement, we may also say no cut budget, it's going up by over $8 million, so I would consider that a cut. As one concerned citizen pointed out recently, it is important to make our decisions passionately based on facts and on emotions. The town council needs to remember that when we tax our citizens, they have to pay, they are our choice, and we must ensure that any tax increase is possible to that all budget is in integrity. The school board proposes a $24.9 million budget for fiscal year 2018. If the, the proposed school budget is true, it will be an increase of over $11 million since 2001, I wish to just throw that, sorry, go ahead. That's an 83% budget increase, along with a 10% increase in students since 2001. From peaking enrollment in 2006, we have lost 244 students and are projected to lose another 30 in next year. That amounts to a budget increase of $7.3 million since 2006, or 41%, with a drop of 50% in enrollment. Salaries and benefits are increasing as a percentage of the school budget. For next year, it will increase by over $860,000 from this year, and will be 83% of the entire school budget. Ten years ago, we had 177 more students than we do today, and salaries and benefits were 75% of the school budget then. It is true that that projected state subsidy of $1,826,000, that is 1.6 million less than in 2016, and we've heard about this from emails we've gotten, and we've heard about this from the school board, they are down 1.6 million in two years, that is true. Although the subsidy round has not been down since 2001, it has averaged $2.5 million. Among things such as property valuation, student enrollment is a factor in what the state calculates Cape Elizabeth and other districts. I do not understand why the school board would base its 2018 budget for school year 2019 on the highest amount it ever received two years ago, which was two years ago, higher by over $328,000 than it's made in 2009. Why base a budget on high water lack, when only once in the last eighteen years did school subsidy ever come close to that? And when the eighteen-year historical average has been $2.5 million, why not plan on something close to the historical average, especially when enrollment continues to decline? From 2001 to 2018, we are looking at an 83% increase in school budget with a 10% increase in enrollment. The, the municipal budget has increased 68% in that timeframe, with no change, virtually no change in the town's population. Again, from peaking enrollment in 2006 to 2018, we are looking at a proposed 41% increase in school budget with a 15% decrease in enrollment. For those of us who own businesses, or have businesses, as I have, would you be hiring more employees if you lost 10 to 15% of your customer base? I don't think so. Not only would you refrain from hiring staff who might choose not to fill positions vacated by attrition, or in light of that size, you would look for economists that perhaps struggle to make payroll. You would not assume that customers, that the customers you still have would be willing to pay 41% to 83% for your, more for your products. I realize that the school budget and, and is well municipal, uh, these are not businesses, but I suspect that few moments have had a 41% or 83% increase in our pay, or our salaries, or our pensions. Most of us have revenue and spending problems. We can't raise. We can't raise our salaries or pensions to meet these tax rate increases. So we have to cut. We have to cut something. I think that a 1% decrease in the school, the proposed school budget is extremely reasonable. It's still a way to increase. And as an endorsement I prepared, we sent to everyone today, and there are comments in the back and online as well, if we had a 1% decrease in the school budget, which we have already, our town manager has already accommodated in the municipal budget, it would give us a total tax rate increase of 3.1%. And that is still above the 10-year average of 2.75%. So again, I'd like to echo Counselor Ray's comments, if not now, when? This train needs to slow down. Thank you.
Other discussion? Counsel Jordan?
I just want to say that as a graduate of the Cape Elizabeth school system, I am a supporter of the school system. But I'm also, as Counselor Ray said, I'm also here for all of the citizens of Cape Elizabeth. And I need to think about that. And this is probably one of the most difficult decisions that I think as a councillor we make, because it's impacting the young people in our, in our community. But what I, as I thought about the budget that was put forth, and as I look at what Counselor Sullivan is putting forward, I do have to look at that as a town, it's not sustainable for us to continue to, year after year after year after year, just move this train forward. And I think we need to step back. And I am in support of we're just like a foot forward at this point in time.
Thank you. Other discussion? Ms. Jordan?
Just a screw bomb, and everybody sat and talked about the justice that proposed within changing, I'd also like to amend it to number seven, order number seven, changing the last six words of the paragraph from the school department's shadow, evaluate their options, instead of curtail spending to offset any shortfall. Depending on what the shortfall is, I would rather, if you're back from the school department, if we need some additional funding, amend the law to, curtail spending to offset any shortfall right now. There, they can walk away and know that they can come back to the town council if they need to, they can curtail some shortfall if they need to. But I'd like them to have the option that if they need an extra $50,000 or something, that they could just come back and ask. So that's, amend the last six words of the paragraph. Take those last six words out and change them to evaluate their options.
Okay. Is there, do you need that read back then? Good.
I have it, thank you.
Is there a second to Counsel Jordan's proposed amendment?
I'll second that.
Counsel Pen Jordan, discretion on the amendment. It's on the floor.
Yeah, I think being a fortunate opportunity to at least deal with the council with the school board, opportunity to investigate the way these superiors spendings, is it worth to comment, you know, what sort of numbers we're going to be? And then come back to the council on the proposed scenario, for potentially giving us the opportunity to potentially supplement, if maybe we're going to save them. So I would support that.
Other discussion? Other discussion on the amendment? I'm, Counsel Jordan, I'm kind of confused in that I finally meant the wording in the amendment to be vague and open-ended. And so I guess a bit uncomfortable with, with that aspect of it. I understand what you're trying to get to in terms of, you know, allowing the counsel discretion to potentially plug holes in the budget. But it, it just feels to me the wording is a bit vague and open-ended. I don't know if others have comments to that, but Counsel.
I, I have no objection there, probably, and what I'm thinking is, if you let it work the way it is, it doesn't prevent the school board from the council, should they do. I wouldn't think.
I agree that as we shout, so they have to curtail their spending to offset any shortfall, so they simply have to. Not be shout to may. You just changed the word shout to may, but.
Yes, if you shout, it's not much.
That's why I'm trying to think of a way, I mean, evaluate their options, thus their options, they can curtail just within their budget. They can come back to, I mean, they only have so many options, really.
If you change the word shout to may, I think that accomplishes what it's done, because it's not a shout, it's a.
I couldn't agree better.
That's all.
Yeah, I think that would provide the flexibility, actually.
That's all I want, is that they can come back to may. Then I made my amendment to the, the school department may curtail spending to offset any shortfall.
Okay. Other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the amendment to change Clause 7, to read the school department may curtail spending to offset any shortfall, all those in favor of the amendment? Okay? So we return to the main motion on the floor. It is the proposed allocation of $24,660,350, reflecting a 1% decrease from what is shown here on the agenda, there are discussions on that. I'll offer some comments. I first wanted to go out of my way to thank all those who attended the public hearing last week and spoke their various opinions relating to the budget, and all those who took the time to email the council, of which we received many emails on this topic. I'm particularly appreciative of the town's continued engagement on this matter. It's by, you know, I think everybody's estimation, the single most important thing that we do, considering it's the single biggest, you know, allocation of your tax dollars. And ultimately, at the end of the day, we're here to be good stewards of everybody's tax dollars, and so appreciate everybody's interest and engagement in the issue. I also want to thank the school board and the superintendent, and Catherine Messmer, and all the rest of the staff for what ultimately is hours upon hours of that as well, hours upon hours of work and time and energy that they put into this. It's, I think, often is, is underappreciated, and it shouldn't be, it's a ton of work that these folks do on behalf of certainly us as councillors, that have the most informed set of data to look at, and also on behalf of the members of the town, the community. So thank you all for that. Jessica, I also want to thank you for what I thought was fantastic leadership of the finance council, the finance committee, rather, and a high level of engagement in all of the workshops, participation in meetings with members of the school board, the business manager. Really appreciate the time that you put into it. Thank you very much for that. Regarding some of the numbers that were discussed earlier, part of the comments, you know, numbers are a funny thing. Like Kathy said, there's a lot of different ways to look at them. And you can take different numbers, you know, certainly to make your case in a number of different ways. I think at the end of the day, everybody up here, you know, wants what's best for the community. I don't question that at all. But I, I think that there's, depending on, you know, how you look at different numbers, there's different stories that are told. There's no questioning that the spending has gone up. There's no debating that fact, whether it be on the municipal side or the school side. There's no, no question in the spending going up. But when I sat in the different budget meetings and went through the, both the municipal budget and the school budget, line by line, like I hope everybody else did, I didn't see, you know, lavish items being asked for. I didn't see extravagance, you know, beyond what I heard articulated as very strong cases for the needs of the students in the schools, and the needs of, on the municipal side, the needs of the community. I think, you know, the cost of delivering services has changed dramatically over, you know, the 10 years that Kathy decided from 2006 to 2016, to use that term. You know, that's, that's a big increase, but, but the cost of the service that we deliver has changed dramatically in that time. I heard 77% salary and benefits versus 83-plus percent salary and benefits. But the composition of those staff have changed during that time. And when I think back to the August 25th workshop and discussion of, for example, just one example, adding head techs, that relative to peer communities, we're really just bringing us up to, up to the recommended level, not even an access level, but the recommended level. You know, those are, those are headcount that add to that 11-plus staff, 11.51 staff over the course of time, Kathy mentioned. Going to full-day kindergarten adds to that staff. The composition of the staff and faculty and support staff that we have has changed dramatically. And that coupled with the, the cost of delivering those services, you know, is a, is a big factor now. I heard reference to the per-student spending, even at the numbers that we're talking about. And this is, these, these next two things I'm going to say really drive to the, the point that I want to make, is the per, per pupil spending is still below almost all of the towns that we measure ourselves and compare ourselves against in the area. So yes, it's increased, but so is everybody else's. I mean, you know, we talk about a runaway train, but there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of trains on a lot of tracks, I guess. But the point that Caitlin made about, you know, the amount that taxes are going up in other communities, I don't see us as an outlier in that. We're all in a tough situation. We're, we're all in a situation where we'd love to have more revenue, right? That would make this an easy problem. But we don't. Now, the last point I'll make is regarding something that Jessica said, which I thought was interesting, that if this was a business and you were charging, I think the point you were making was if you were charging your customers more for the service, you know, would those customers turn away? We haven't seen our customers turn away at, you know, in the last several Junes, when they've gone to the ballot box to ratify the budget that's put before them. It's been, it's been approved, and in most cases by strong margins. I think that's the interesting and compelling point to be made here, is that at least on the school board portion of the budget, the voters have the chance to, to make their voice heard. We heard in the meeting that we had last week during the public comment period, that there's more people that are families in town that don't have students than those that do. And there was, I think somebody was making a point about whether or not the schools benefit everybody in the community. I'm not going to open up that can of worms, but, but all of those people also have the opportunity to come to the, to the, to the voting booths on, on June 13th to make their voice heard. If those, if those folks decide and, you know, indicate that they don't want to approve the budget and, or, you know, in the non-vining question, indicate what their, their sentiment is towards it, then that'll be, I think, a strong indicator for us. But to date, those customers haven't turned away. And so, you know, for those reasons, I'm going to vote against the proposed decrease. I, I made the point during the workshop, but I think, while I understand the intention of the, of the measure, I think that the 1% decrease is a little bit arbitrary. I think it's also a little bit disingenuine to say that, you know, the municipal side of the house sort of magnanimously made this massive reduction, because number one, it wasn't in the, in the scheme of things as much, they needed to be reduced, obviously, as a percentage of the overall budget to get to that. But number two, there were some things, I think, that were sort of already low-hanging fruit, that we all agreed that whether there was an ask for the 1% reduction or not, just made sense to do. And so I, I, I don't think it's entirely, it doesn't pass the entire straight face test for me to say, well, here the town bent over backwards to get to that 1%, and the school didn't. But so anyway, I'm going to vote against the measure to reduce. I can also count and see that that leaves us, unless somebody plans to change their, the way that they were leaning, I can see that that leaves us at 3-3. But if there's no further discussion, I'll call the question. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion on the floor to allocate budget amount of $24,660,350, all those in favor? Opposed? Who are deadlocked?
In the event of a tie vote on motion, the motion, the vote, or the item, or the motion doesn't carry, so the motion is lost. I think that tied open.
Okay. Counsel Ray?
I'd like to make a motion to approve a school budget based on the superintendent's original budget of March 7th, 2017, of $24,682,945.
A second time.
Can you just repeat the amount, Kathy?
This is a higher number than the 1%.
Yep, thank you. Moved by Counsel Ray, seconded by Counselor Jordan. Is there any discussion? Counsel Jordan?
I'd like to make the amendment to, to change to a shout to may.
Is there a second for that amendment?
For what?
Just the same thing we did for the first one.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Counsel Jordan, any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor. See none, as, back to the original motion, the $24,682,945, representing the figure from the superintendent's original budget submitted on May, March 7th, I think it was the day. Other discussion? Jessica?
Yes. I attended that initial school board budget meeting, and the superintendent presented his original budget to the school board. And I, I thought it was quite reasonable. I thought, well, I could support that, plus the school board added a lot of money to that. But it would, if we approved that, it would bring a total tax rate increase, that's every amendment, municipal, homestead, counting to 3.3%. I don't like that as much as 3.1%. It would be 1% decrease across the board, but I, I can support this.
Other discussion? Counsel Ray?
The reason I proposed this is I recognize we need to count the floor. And this is not the number I want. It's higher than the number I want. But in answer to the chairman's concern, this is not an arbitrary number. This is the number that the superintendent initially proposed. And I'll just add a couple of things. Looking at the school budget for a number of years, there's, in my opinion, there's a tendency for, for folks to get emotionally charged up about the budget. a tendency for, for folks to get emotionally charged up about the budget, and I understand that. I have a child, and a lot of people do have children, and it's not hard to get concerned, especially if you hear some soundbites that, oh my gosh, if we don't get all the money we need, the children are going to suffer. I have not found that to be the case so far. I, as I mentioned before, I think that the, the school is a partnership, and it's parents expecting a lot from their children, children expecting a lot, and staff expecting a lot and providing a lot. This number is higher than CPIU, it's higher than the cost of living, it's higher than the social security increase. So, again, we're talking about folks in town that are going to struggle to even keep up with this number, but I, I, I will support it. I'd like it to be lower, I think I said that once, I'll say it again, but I realize that there are counselors that have different opinions, and I'm hoping that we can come up with something that at least four of us can agree upon, it would be nice if it was six, so I'll just stop there.
Thank you. Other discussion? Counselor?
I would just ask, trying to think about, you know, to the original question, so I'm not really, I'm not talking to hundreds of dollars in the bill, because I'm not going to assume that, honestly, this budget proposal, we should really consider that, so it's still a really, you know, against this.
Other discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor of the motion on the floor to allocate a budget of $24,682,945 for a school budget for fiscal 18? All those opposed? No further along? Counsel Jordan?
I have a motion to approve item 76, 2017, school budget approval, out of the reason for $24,679,14, also changing order number seven, last sentence, concerning school department shall curtail, school department may.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Discussion? I would just point out that, the, two things. I don't know if it was being rounded up on what was circulated to us with the, with the three different scenarios here, from 3.9 or 3.8, but either one of those is a total tax increase less than fiscal 17, which was 3.91, so even a 3.9, we're effectively flat to last year. And I'm also reminded, I believe, well, I better check that before recording that statement, hold on. Just a second. Yeah, I, I, the proposed expenditures on the school side are, just reminding everybody, less than they were for, for fiscal 17 as well, so... I understand and appreciate the overall concern about the general trend and on average here, but I think on year-over-year comparison from fiscal 17 to fiscal 18, I don't know that a more reasonable effort could have been made in this case, particularly, again, calling back to the needs that I heard expressed and articulated as critical to, to delivering the, the quality of education that, that is expected in this town. You know, to see, to see ultimately numbers that come in under last year's tax increase and based on expenditures on the school side that are less than the previous year's, to me, represents more than a good faith effort to be cognizant of the fiduciary responsibility that we have to be good stewards of the taxpayers' money, so... Other discussion? Justice?
When you are saying that the school department's spending less than in fiscal 2017, I'm, I'm not sure how you're making that conclusion. Their, their budget for 2017 is $24,287,000.
The percent increase in their expenditures is what I was referring to, 2.4% versus, I think, 3.2 from 1617. Kathy for clarifying?
Mr. Chairman, if, if, if this would double all of the council's discussion, while we were discussing how to initiate the changes from the earlier part, the $48 reduction on the municipal side, and when you had that deduction taking place from the 600 account, that takes the total impact on the tax rate from the 3.88, or, let's say, rounded up to 3.9% to 3.71%. So, the town side of that, you know, it's all, it's all come down to be one final number, but the town side, instead of doing, it was at 1.1% to the town, so seven tenths of 1% decrease, the revenue part stayed the same, but ultimately the bottom-line impact was the town's, uh, impact on the tax rate is going up nine tenths of 1%, but overall you're going to have a net change of 3.71%, so this, as opposed to earlier, of what that change was made at 3.9 or 3.88%, so we picked up, the actions earlier tonight picked up a, a deduction there.
The other point I'd actually like to point out, number seven, we were, we were talking about the clause seven and the language around, if there's a short, further shortfall, well, we haven't focused on as much on that item, is the language in there that is different from what the school board had proposed around the, any event of excess funds being received from the state, and what to do with those, those dollars, should, should they be realized. So, the school board, I think, had proposed returning 50% of any excess funds to the unassigned fund balance and the 50% remaining to, to reduce tax burden. I think with the measure here, to be 100%, that's, I think, a good faith sort of expression to recognize the needs as requested, but also understand that, you know, any, anything over and above that will go immediately to addressing the, you know, the problem that we've all identified of, of the taxpayers having to shoulder the burden, you know, for any increase like this, so... In any case, I, I, we hadn't really discussed that tonight, I thought I'd bring that up as well, so... Other discussion?
I believe that has to be the standard in practice, anyway.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention it was different from what had been proposed by the school board, so... Counsel Ray?
I would just add that the chances of the state sending us additional monies is probably fairly slim, it's happened in the past, but very seldom. And if they do, those are just small dollars, those are baby dollars compared to what we're talking about, not millions, so I just wanted to leave that out.
Just as, as a helpful point as well, this chairman would be helpful. Speaking with Superintendent Coulter and the business manager Catherine Mesmer today, unfortunately, the vocals are taking place in town by the time we know anything, and hopefully it'll be, we'll, we will know what that number is before the start of the fiscal year, but there's a good chance it may be the start of July before we end up knowing exactly what that number is being.
Everyone's optimistic that it'll be a greater number than what the members will make it state.
But until the legislature finally swings the hammer and closes the session, we know this is the no number at this point in time, so...
I have a question for you. So, we need some agreement tonight, because this needs to go, the 30 days has to be beforehand, so we can't table this for a week?
No.
Can you try to get this, uh, recruited back in?
Yeah, we, we do have absentee ballot requests that have been received already announced.
Other discussion? Kathy, I appreciate your point on the likelihood of additional funds, you know, um, thank you for pointing that out. Other discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor of the motion on the floor that we allocate, lost track of it, can't hold on. What was the total? $24,879, uh, eight, $24,879,14, as presented in the agenda today, with the alteration to clause seven of May curtail spending to offset any shortfall. All those in favor? Opposed? Keep at it. Counsel Olin?
Yeah, yeah, I have a motion.
Please.
I am willing that we approve a school budget in the house, and this is the budget originally proposed by the superintendent, of $24,682,945, and that we amend number seven, which, you know, we amend number seven to return it to the original language of 50% goes to taxpayer relief and 50% to, to the school budget.
And, and, yeah, we may, we may, or it'll be the shortfall, 50% on taxpayers' payroll.
True, that's right. Okay, yes, and, and change the work schedule to May.
Is there a second?
A second.
Counsel Ray? Question? Yep?
The, the reason I returned that is that, again, when I attended, I really thought that that was a reasonable question, and I thought perhaps I, I could support it, and then when we had our workshop and we were even considering a 1% change to the school budget, the school superintendent did say he could work with that, and that he would make it work, and then several counselors took the obvious direction on that, but he did say that, and I, I have full confidence that he would do that very well. It is still an increase of about $300,000 from fiscal year 17.
Other discussion? Counsel Jordan?
I understand that the superintendent said he can make it work, because he pointed out that if our adults and the classes are told, and what he has to do, obviously, when it be, you know, if he wants to, or has to, have to do, that's all that goes, and as Counsel Ray was pointing out, if we get any extra money, those are baby dollars, it's not going to make up for the $200,000 plus that the proposal's been cutting the budget right now, where they're going to get baby dollars, and, and that this proposal will get 50% of those baby dollars, so they'll get newborn baby dollars. Sorry, but I gotta keep it going, keep it like, basically, right now, we're doing, we're like, working as if we don't have a, a vote coming up, we need to just send the budget to the people, and if they say that the budget's too high, then we can come back, so we can go back and forth on picking numbers, or maybe they'll say the budget's too low, and we can give them more money. But we're, we're, we're acting before we even hear from the people, that's why we have these, you know, these votes to approve the school budget, so that the people can vote, and we can give direction from them.
I have to, I'm sorry.
No, just acknowledging, okay.
The role of council is not to set the budget for the schools, the role is to be a checks and balances, so that if you had a runaway school board who was, was not involved in the process, who didn't grind through all the details, and come up with, with a budget that they thought would meet the needs of making sure our schools are as excellent as they've always been, that they follow the mandates, and have all the funding that they need to make out of, I feel, if they're budget, so, I, I don't see, I feel, and I agree with you, that we, by just generally saying 1%, I understand, we're trying to slow the train, but I do think that we, we are not, our role is not to be a checks and balances situation, it is a reasonable budget, and I agree that we should send that to, if, if our ankle is up to vote, we should be sending the number that came from school board and let the people of this community, then come forth and make a statement about what they feel or don't feel, sorry.
Other discussion? Counsel Ray?
Respectfully, I disagree with Counsel Brandon's position. The town council's role is to be the checks and balances on this budget, and I do not believe it's a budget, I believe that is more than satisfactory, I believe the current motion on the table is to approve the superintendent's original budget, am I correct? And so, in my mind, if the superintendent thought it was okay, then I have a lot of faith in him and how the school system is run. Superintendent's job is a very difficult job. Being on the school board three years, I saw that firsthand, and I will say, and I think that there was some misinformation at the school board and the town councils' joint workshop, when the town, when the state first decided that the school budget would go to the voters after the town council, the first year that happened, it was like the Three Bears, it was too high, it was too low, and it was just right. To my knowledge, I could be wrong, but to my knowledge since then, the number that the council sends to the voters is the number that has been approved. If I'm wrong, please correct me. So, the number that we decide tonight is a very important number, and I'm not saying that the school didn't do their job, I'm not saying the county, the, uh, the school department didn't do their job, I'm not implying that at all, but what I'm implying is that the council has to take into consideration the entire town and all the taxpayers, and the people that we heard at the public hearing that we had recently, that said, I can't afford these taxes. There's lots of people in town that can't. I've heard comments in the past from individuals, from town counselors, that said, well, this is only the cost of taking your family out to dinner a couple of times. There are people in town that can't take their family out to dinner. There are people in town who are maybe single parents, who have a couple of children, and they need to put braces on their child's teeth, and that's $5,000 to $6,000. they need to put braces on their child's teeth, and that's five to six thousand dollars, I remember. And the thought of people having to make decisions about paying their taxes, or buying groceries, or something that is very important, like heating oil or electricity, I think that we have to keep that in, I think we have to keep that in mind. As I said before, and I'll say it again, even if we do not give the schools everything they're asking for, they are not going to be hurt. The students are still going to be getting a good education. I do not believe that this is going to hurt them the way some other folks think it is. And I would also suggest that, well, I'll say, the first year I was on the school board, the school boards, the superintendent's proposal, like, was an eleven percent increase. I voted against it. I was severely chastised for not being a supporter of the schools. It was too high, and there were other people in town that knew it was too high. There were other times when I was on the school board and I voted against the superintendent's budget. I would say that I'm moderately conservative, some might think I'm very conservative, but I'm actually not. But I know that sometimes, when you're talking about the school budget, folks that have a direct interest in their children, because their children are in schools, I think, sometimes has somewhat conflicted interest. And I'll just put that out there, I have a child in the school. Fortunately and unfortunately, I, I do when I say what I think, and right or wrong, I'm pretty, I'm pretty direct, and I think everybody knows that, so I'll just put that out there.
Other discussion?
And I would be supportive of Jessica's most recent, again, higher than I want, but I would be supportive of the motion.
Councilor.
Yeah, I would like to say, yeah, that in this system of checks and balances, as the way it's set up by law, by state law, I recall in two thousand eight, I believe it was, at the height of great recession, I think that was the first year that the, the school budget went to the voters, if I'm maybe wrong, I think it was the first or the second year, after that changed place with legislation. The, so anyway, at the height of great recession, the school, the school budget proposed was thirteen percent, and it went back and forth, and several times, and it was five, it was five point three percent, I believe. So, there was a very glaring example of the importance of checks and balances. I'd also like to, to say that, yes, you know, I understand, Senator Garret's point about it being smaller than the increase than last year, but I think, yet, it's very important to go into history, and every single tax rate increase is an exponential decre, the, increase, excuse me, an exponential increase over the year before, so the number is bigger, bigger, bigger. It's just not a one-time thing, it's three percent of a bigger number, a bigger number every year. So, I'm hoping the council will support the superintendent's bringing the budget with the fifty-fifty amendment.
Other discussion? To the point you just made, Councilor, I think that the example that you gave of whether it was, I'm guessing it was fiscal two thousand nine, based on the history we're seeing here, because it was a total municipal, total tax rate increase of five point nine five that year, so I'm guessing it was probably fiscal nine. I honestly just think that that underscores my point from before, where if, if I saw the school board coming in with what I felt was an unreasonable number, an outlandish number, a number that was based on budget requests for programs and services that were so far above and beyond, you know, what was needed, I would completely agree with it. Were I on the council back in two thousand nine, I'm, I'm sure I would have agreed with that. I just don't see that as being the case this year. Having also attended that March seventh workshop where the school superintendent listened to the rationales that were delivered from department heads, building principals, and things like that, I don't, I don't think the way the process works, I don't, I don't think, and I see Dr. Coulter in the back, I don't think that the intent was that the March seventh draft budget were, you know, was to be final. And I also have faith that those additional items of which, I guess rounds up to about a hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars, if I'm doing the math correctly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Were deemed to be priorities. I, I don't, I don't think that that exercise would have been undertaken on March seventh simply as a means of pacifying folks that were, you know, just pushing to add more, more fat to the budget. You know, what I heard a lot of in that March seventh workshop when I was there was discussion around things like gifted and talented programs, where even with this budget, we're, we're still not fully funding a gifted and talented program in the way that many of our other peer communities are. Adding ed techs to certain buildings that even, even at that, we're, you know, just barely coming up to par with other communities. What I keep looking back at is the point I made earlier, whether it be the per-people spending, whether it be the, the amount of increases that are happening in other towns, I don't see any of these things being out of line with what's happening sort of across the, the region. And, you know, I do have, I, I don't, no, I won't, never mind. So, in any case, I, I guess the, the final point I make is that I understand the fact that, number one, as councillors, we represent the entire community. We've certainly heard from people at the public hearing last week, we've heard from many other people, you know, in the course of emails submitted to the council, of which I take, I don't know if others do as well, but I take all forms of comment, through whichever channel they're delivered, to be of equal importance, whether somebody stands here in the chamber at a public hearing, or they send us an email. So, I think we've heard from, you know, a lot of different people on this issue. I understand very clearly the, the issue of some people in this community having more means than others. I'm someone who, in the last year and a half, has spent portions of, of that period unemployed I've, I've collected unemployment in that time. I don't take for granted the, the good fortunes that we have in this community, because I've certainly, in the very recent past, experienced the not-so-good times. And for me, you know, increases of any kind have real meaning. I don't take them lightly. They impact me. Certainly have in the past year and a half, I'll tell you that, a lot more than they have. Doesn't change how I value and how I think many in the community, and many of the people that, you know, have asked us to represent their views here, doesn't change how I think people place value on, on, on what is provided in this community. So, anyway, I'll leave that at that. Any other discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion on the floor for a budget allocation in the amount of twenty-four million six hundred eighty-two thousand nine hundred and forty-five dollars with the amendment to clause seven to reflect a fifty-fifty split of any excess dollars received from the state, fifty percent going to the school's unassigned fund balance, and fifty percent to the reduction of property taxes, with the modification of the clause that the school department may curtail spending to offset any shortfall. All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed? Councilor Jordan?
Counselor Ray brought up a point about the history of a vote for the school budget. When it first came out, we had three bears to step in, and I will just say it. If anything, tonight has brought so much attention to the importance of a vote coming up next month. And so, if people are interested in the budget being reduced, then they should get out there and get everybody to vote that the budget is too high. And those that feel that the budget is just right, need to get out there and vote to approve the budget. And so, I propose, I would make a motion to approve by number seventy-six, two thousand seventeen, with a budget of twenty-four million eight hundred seventy-nine thousand thirteen dollars, leaving number seven at one hundred percent going back to allocate, to alleviate the tax burden, and changing the workshop tonight.
Is there a second?
Chairman Grant. Would you ask Counselor Jordan to approve the motion? Because I, I'm, I just reduced the budget by one dollar. So, I approved the budget by ten from one eighty-eight hundred seventy-nine thousand thirteen dollars, because I can't make a motion for the same motion that was being referred, so I, I didn't add another, I reduced it a dollar. And encouraging us to take faith in the people of this town, that they will come out and vote and direct us as to what they want, because obviously, we're at a three-three deadlock here, so we need to hear from the voters, and that is the point of having this go to the voters. There's, there's no more better reason to have a school referendum, voters, whatever it's called, I'm sorry, I'm naming the wrong thing. That's why we have it, exactly, because checks and balances, everybody's talking about, that is the point. And so, putting forward the budget by minus one dollar, leaving one hundred percent going back to, alleviating the tax burden, and changing the workshop tonight.
Is there a second?
I'll say it now.
Councilor Grant, discussion? Counselor Ray?
I'll just remind folks of what I said earlier. The number that the council sends to the voters is likely to be approved, regardless of whether voters agree or disagree. It has historically been approved. So, I don't necessarily agree with Counselor Kate and Jordan that the voters would come out and tell us, if, if we had no number, maybe the voters would come out and tell us that, but whatever the council decides is probably my estimation, the count, the number that will be voted on. And I don't think that, for myself, speaking for myself, has nothing to do with valuing education, I do. I have a daughter that's about to graduate from graduate school this weekend, and she graduated from Daniel Thomas, she got a good education. I will also make a comment, which I didn't really want to make, but I'm going to anyway, we do get a lot of feedback from people. And I saw her pattern in the past. I am always interested in what folks have to say, I'm always interested in people's opinion. What I find annoying, and I'll use that word, is when somebody sends out an email and says to people, "You need to write to the council, and here's what you need to say." And then the council starts getting repetitive emails with the exact same wording, which is what we receive today. This has happened multiple times in the past. And I think that people who send them, their intentions are good, their intentions are good. You know, "I want to support the budget, oh my gosh, I've heard the council might vote down the number, I want to support the budget." And then copy and paste. Come on, you know? Do you have your own opinion? Let's hear it, but let's not do the copy and paste. So, yeah, I'm a little not so nice about that, but I, I guess I'm just saying, is if you have something to say, say it. Don't do the copy and paste. And it wasn't just today. I've seen it over the last fourteen years, several times. In that one time, it was really interesting, about, oh, lots and lots and lots of words for a word. I want to hear what you have to say, I'm interested, but don't do the copy and paste. So, I'm interested in comments when I see a copy and paste. I really don't give out attention, because I know it can be from somebody else. So, I don't know, I know we're at a deadlock. Obviously, somebody has to jump off the wagon here. I feel that I compromised where I want to be, in hopes that if I went up a little, some counselors might go down a little, and maybe we could get at least four votes for something. But I will, I will not vote for the school board's budget, so, thank you.
Other discussion? Counselor Jordan?
I understand Counselor Ray's saying you went up a little, thinking that we would come down a little, but again, we're just randomly picking a number that we might not need to. And I understand that you're saying that the vote, the number of votes to the vote is generally approved, but maybe that's because it's generally supported. I mean, it wasn't approved that one year. Obviously, people had an opinion that year. We have created more awareness around this budget just tonight, unfortunately, it did not be there, so we're going to have to talk it up, and people are going to have to spread the word. But the whole point is to send this to the vote, and if people don't like the number, then we can come back and do what you're suggesting, pick me the number.
Other discussion?
I'll say. We, we're going to sit here all evening, and this is a, like I said already, this is a very challenging evening for me, because I, I really, I really believe that we need to do something to start to contain costs in every town. I do support what Caitlin says, and that if we send this to the voters, but people need to get out and vote, because there are, I know there are people who stay away from the polls because they don't think their vote is going to count, but if you don't get out there and vote, of course, it's not going to be counted, because it won't be there. But I will say that when Sarah told me that she, she wasn't going to, that she was going to be taking hiatus from the council, I said, "You put me in the position of a swing vote, and that isn't where I wanted to sit." But that's where I'm sitting, because I am probably at the tilt that I would say, send this to the voters. I'm a, I'm a business owner, I believe in containing costs, reallocating resources, all of those things that I would, I would ask be done. But at this point, we're going to sit here all evening, and we're just going to go back and forth. And so, I'm going to be the swing vote.
Other discussion? Council?
Would you repeat the motion?
Right now, it's, uh, if you're my intention, uh, this, uh, I'm going to say to move the school budget from twenty-four million eight seventy-nine zero, uh, twenty-four million eight seventy-nine zero one three, uh, would be a number, and the town is still keeping one hundred percent language, where they see very, they understand that a hundred percent of that will be used for the taxes. And then finally, switching to shall, may, and the last, the last sentence of that part. One question I had, Counselor Jordan, was under number one, under seventy-six. One question ahead, Counsel Jordan, was under number one, number 76, where would you like me to take that dollar? How about?
All of their expenditures.
All of their expenditures, if there's ever just that, to $62,108. Just one question, take that dollar in the focus bar.
Counsel Jordan, thank you for your words. If there's no other discussion, call a question. All those in favor of the motion on the table allocate funds in the amount of $24,879,13 with 100%, well, it's as worded, and change to the clause seven to reflect the language of "may". All those in favor? Opposed? Measure passes. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, item number 77 dash 2017, approval of the Conover County assessment. Is there a motion?
I think there is.
Is there a second?
Second.
Counsel Jordan, any discussion? All those in favor? Ananmas. Item number 78 dash 2017, approval of the local homestead exemption funds. Is there a motion?
Question to approve.
Counsel Jordan, is there a second?
I'll sign it.
Counsel Grant, any discussion?
Yes.
All those in favor? It's unanimous. Item number 79 dash 2017, property tax levy limit. Is there a motion?
Question to approve.
Can you read the whole motion, please?
By order of the people of the town council, according to Title 30A, marks A, section 572.1, then A, not people who give by decreasing the property tax levy limit, to the $78,246,029.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
Second.
Counsel Jordan, any discussion? All those in favor? Number 80 dash 2017, proposed fiscal year 2018 general fund budget summary motion.
Motion to approve. I want to hear it.
No.
Mr. Chairman, one of the sayers, I would make the adjustments according to the balance on this grid to reflect the changes that the council made in this evening.
Is there a second?
I'll sign that.
Okay, I moved it. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Counsel Sullivan opposed? And that concludes our budgets motions. Last item on the agenda for tonight is number 91, 91 dash 2017, recommendation from the appointments committee to fill the Fort Williams Park vacancy. Is there somebody representing the appointments committee tonight, seeing as the chair?
Do you want to do it, anyone?
The appointments committee is. Counsel Sullivan.
Counsel, and Jordan and I met last week and interviewed three violent citizens for the vacancy in Fort Williams Park committee. We are sorry, we're in the hurry. I want to thank all three applicants who took their time, come and live with us and express their interest in serving the town. And as always, we are so fortunate that there are citizens, and it was not in this decision. But we're pleased to acknowledge your position.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Counsel Jordan, any discussion? All those in favor? Ananmas. Is there anybody remaining that wishes to speak? That concludes our regular agenda. Is there anybody remaining that wishes to speak to anything non-honorable? Seeing none. Is there a motion to adjourn? Counsel Jordan, second?
Second.
Counsel Jordan, in favor? Thank you very much. Good night.
I have the name. I'll say it if you know it, too.
Awesome. Thank you. I've got a note here. See that?
I'll have to take a little bit of time to cut the pace of that.
Yeah. No problem. We'll get it.
I'll do two, um, I'll do two, Jamie, is get these done as soon as I can approach them, a nice draft online if people want to, if we see, because we don't have a video and.
Okay.
So, you know, I'm sure Wendy will be writing an article, but, so.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, it's not like them.